It's time to bring the State Department of Schools Board Education Regular Meeting to Order at 5:30 PM on Monday, June 10, 2024. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. It's time to move on to the票立legislation layer. Our Mr. Kenny Whitson.
I, your head, please. Father in heaven, I ask that you come into this meeting, Father, that you be with us, you be with our decisions, you be with all of us, Father, in everything that we're doing. Bless our school, you bless our faculty, you be with us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, it's time to move on to the approval of the minutes from the May 13, 2024 meeting.
May 13, 2024.
A second motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the minutes from the May 13, 2024 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
I abstained.
Uh, uh, David?
Yes.
And Susie abstained. It's time to move over, uh, on to approval of encumbrances and change orders.
Okay.
On first page, uh, 489, that was when we did the, decided to enclose the corridor. We had to reroute some fiber cables, and so that's what that cost. They couldn't just pull them out. They had to take, you know, new fiber and then reroute them. They couldn't break them apart.
Where was that at?
At grade school. It's kind of where that, that awning that goes to the first and fourths. We had to reroute them. Where they're putting in that corridor, we had to move them. But, you know, I think it'd be easy just to cut them, but you can't, can't do that with fiber. Uh, 490, those are bus parts. Uh, 492, that was for pipe from, for the grade school playground to put those, you know, the existing pipe, we're gonna put the shell on there. And the middle school fence. Uh, 495, 496. 495 is out of 412, which is, uh, tech ed money. That's computers for the tech ed. 496 is out of Title I and Title V, but that's more computers, too. It's some desktops and some, uh, Chromebooks. Uh, 502, 503, and 504 are all for Carl Perkins out of FCC LA, or four FCC LA. 505, all the way down through the next page. 522 is reimbursement for some professional development. Uh, first page is the Choctaw summer school training, and the second page is, uh, the PLC training.
Woo.
523 is for, uh, that's our supplies. That's our, that includes the wax and the stripper. That's why it's so much higher this month. And 525 is more Chromebooks out of Title I. Uh, 526, we actually had a blanket PO with first year, but they changed their name, so we had to do a new PO. And that's for our Fortinet renewal, which is part of our firewall for our computers.
She wants to hear.
And on the next page, we have payment for unused vacation. And on the next page is 21st century summer school changes. And last page is out of child nutrition. That's after school snacks. And those are the encumbrances.
Can I ask you a question?
Anybody any questions about it?
Can I please approve the encumbrances?
A second.
Second. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to approve the encumbrances and change orders as listed. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Move on to other financial reports.
Okay.
Shift time.
Okay, well, this is not the color one, but we got the minuses in there, which is, minuses is good, are good. So our payroll, three months, we do our three month payroll is up eighty-three thousand from last year. That's about what we expected. Our bills for the year, for this, this month, they're up about twenty thousand. For the year, they're down a hundred ninety-six. So overall, we're up two hundred thirty-four, which is really good for our, for our encumbrances. But, bad news is, um, if you'll see last year, our bills were four hundred fifteen. Well, our insurance alone is gonna be three hundred and fifteen. That's, that includes our liability, property, and, uh, workers' comp. Yeah, that went way up. And then also, our textbooks will be close to two hundred. So that's, we're gonna have a big, big one there. So you expect that. That's gonna kind of hurt that a little bit. The good news is, right now, we're at three point three eight oh. And last year at this time, we were at, uh, two million forty-five thousand. So we're up, we're well up there. We're gonna be fine, but it isn't gonna be a lot of expenses. Uh, building fund, we're still good in the building fund. Uh, child nutrition down a little bit, but I think next year with our, everybody's gonna be free. And we get ninety-six percent reimbursement in the middle school and grade school, and then seventy-five in the high school. So it's gonna be, I think we'll kind of build that back up. Should get a lot more. But pretty financially secure. We're gonna be fine. We are gonna have a pretty big bills this month.
Yeah, I mean, Mrs., have we already been, have we already had some large invoices come through for the grade school? What's, what we're doing?
Not enough. I mean, everything we get, we get reimbursed for right now, so it's, but no.
Is it reimbursed that quick? I mean, is it?
Pretty, well, yeah, pretty quick. It's within the month. No, I mean, once we, it's that month usually.
Okay.
It's real.
So it won't even be?
So really, it's, yeah, we, we spend out there. We may hit one time where it doesn't get reimbursed, but it gets back.
It shows back gap if I didn't.
Right. But we haven't had any real huge bills yet. They're coming. But honestly, we, we need them to come.
Yeah.
Um, so no, I think we're, we're in good shape right now. And that is the other financial reports.
Okay. It's time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education backs up public comment at this time in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning the gen items in accordance with policy BED dash R. No one present for that. Information items, A, superintendent's report.
Okay. And I don't have a whole lot this month, but it's hard to believe. Actually, we've already been out of school. Students have already been out of school for one month. It goes fast. But, uh, even though it's summer, we have a lot going on. Our maintenance and custodial staff are working hard to get everything completed. All the summer cleaning, all the projects, teachers and students. We drive by the, by the grade school. There's a lot of cars there still every day. Those teachers in summer school and, uh, we still have three weeks left of that summer school down there. Uh, grade school, weather didn't cooperate last year, last week. So we're gonna pour the footings on Wednesday. And the good thing is that since we approved that corridor, we can, we're gonna pour all of them at once. They're not gonna be pieced together. I think it'd be better. It's all gonna be solid. So everything looks pretty good. The, uh, architect will be here tomorrow to inspect them before they port. I'm assuming they'll do it early Wednesday morning. I don't really know, but I figured it'd be early.
Are we still good on the schedule? I mean, that, that's the critical.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting close, 'cause you like this, the date they bring the buildings. We need to have the slab completed by then.
Have a keg and all of that before.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the key. Uh, John Humphrey said he offered to be here tonight. I said, well, I think next month will be good. Can I ask more questions? It'll be, the building should be here, and he thinks we'll go vertical by then, so that'll help, help follow us.
We're gonna find.
Once I think they get going, we don't have to worry about that. I think it'll go pretty good. Right now, I hope we won't have any more delays and get back on schedule.
It's our deadline. When's our deadline for?
December for the money.
Okay. So it's the end of the year. Okay. Some reason I had September in my head.
Well, it has to be encumbered by then, which means it has to be under contract, which it's already under contract.
Okay, okay.
We'll have to do it again in July, but it's, it's there. It's just, I don't know, you know, I was counting. I said, oh, we have eight months. No big deal. And then I keep going. Yeah, seven months.
Yeah.
I'm running a season mood. So they're well aware, and I think, I think it'll be fine, but I'd like to see some. That's why I say I'd like to see some bigger bills.
Right.
More going on. But I, I think we're gonna be fine. I do. That is the superintendent.
Okay. It's time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of second semester attendance waivers.
Okay. And we do this each semester. The high school attendance committee reviews the attendance of high school students who have more than ten instances in a class. The first page, and the top of the second page are students who, uh, will receive the waiver. Uh, the students on the bottom page will not receive a waiver. So the attendance committee, they sincerely consider each student and their situation, and I would recommend approving waivers as listed.
Make a motion to approve this semester, second semester attendance waivers as listed.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to accept the second semester attendance waivers. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, examination of capacity in consideration of revision of the following school policy, student transfers dash FE.
Okay, this is our quarterly review of our current policy regarding student transfers and our capacity levels. I don't think we need to make any changes at this policy, to the policy at this time. Recommend approving as is.
I make a motion that we approve the student transfer policy dash FE.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to accept the examination of the capacity in consideration of revisions of the following school policy, student transfers. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of workers' compensation insurance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, we only received one bid this year, and that was from OSAG, or Oklahoma School Insurance Group. That's the same company we're currently with, and their bid was twenty-five thousand five hundred, which is twelve hundred and twenty dollars more than last year. So it's not, it's not too much more. I don't know when it all stops, but I would recommend we accept that bid.
I make a motion to approve the contract with OSAG regarding workers' compensation insurance for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the workers' compensation insurance with OSAG for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of property liability transportation insurance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, once again, we, you know, we only have one company that does it. We received one bid, which is O-SIG, Oklahoma School Insurance Group. And that's, you know, who we're with, and it's really the only viable organization that provides school insurance right now. But their bid was two hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight more than last year. If you look at that page, um, where they have, they have like the two hundred ninety-four, and they look at our historical, like in twenty twenty-one, it was a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Twenty-one, twenty-two was a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Twenty-two, twenty-three was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And last year, we actually paid two hundred and twelve. But if you remember, our appraise value this year changed, and so what they have on that historical premium says two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Well, that's what it would have cost if our appraised value had been done at the first of the year. We paid two twelve, but it would have been two seventy-one. So that was the, and we increased our valuation, appraise value by eleven million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. So it would have already gone up just because of that to two seventy-one last year, but it's increased another twenty-three thousand to two.
What caused our appraise value to go up?
They came back in and did a reevaluation.
The county bid?
No, the, they sent an appraiser out. O-SIG did. Pretty good rack. I mean, I say it's a rack, but it.
That one's rotten.
Rotten.
And policy.
And increasing that. You know, it, it seems absolutely ridiculous. We get the exact same thing at work. I mean, I was shocked. I mean, it's went up probably fifty percent in the last two years. Uh, I think it was thirty-something this year. Thirty-something percent was.
I mean, I, you know, I think if something does happen, we want enough money to cover it. See, once your appraised value to be there to replace it, but, yeah, that's a big increase over three years.
I guess there's nothing, I mean, as far as state goes, there's no other, I mean, you don't have any other options in the entire state of Oklahoma.
Yeah, only one company will do it.
I make a motion. We approve the O-SIG, uh, proposal for property liability transportation insurance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to accept the property liability and transportation insurance with O-SIG for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of renewing our membership in O-SAC for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, these next four or five topics are all just to renew our memberships we do each year. The first one is O-SAC, or the Oklahoma School Advisory Council. They provide professional development, some advisory and advocacy at the state level. They do provide extensive job-specific professional development, especially in special education. They also offer some maintenance training, it's a maintenance certification training, which helps us inspect more of our own equipment, which is much more cost-effective. And I would recommend we renew our membership in this group.
Have these stayed flat, or have these all gone up, too?
You know?
Because I just personally would.
They're all the same, I believe.
Okay, yeah. Make a motion to renew our membership in O-SAC for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to renew our membership in, uh, O-SAC for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of renewing our membership in Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, this is like I said, for OSSBA, for our required, they provide the required board training, advocacy, and they have legal counsel available for general legal advice. And I would recommend we renew our membership with OSSBA.
Do we, I don't know, it's three grand, but do we actually utilize that as far as, I mean, I know we go to conference and all that.
Yeah, the, we do. They do a lot. I mean, they keep us up to date on all, all the stuff. They do a lot of advocacy, let you know, and then, um, if there's a general legal question, I'll, I'll call them. Uh, if it's more specific, we go to, and it's.
Yeah.
You know, it's great. They won't give you, they, they'll, what they'll say is, okay, hey, this is, this is what you can do, but it's not legal advice. It's not something you can go by. But, I mean, they're all attorneys.
Yeah.
But they're not gonna.
I get tired of that.
They're not gonna narrow it down. You're gonna have to pay your, your school, they said, but check with your school attorney. Well, our school attorney's pretty high.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's good for just your basic questions and the basic.
And that's included in the, in the membership, yeah, okay. Make a motion. We approve the OSSBA, uh, membership for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to approve our membership with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of renewing our policy maintenance service subscription with Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
This is where they do kind of give you real advice to your policies, where they actually, they'll stand behind it. I say they'll stand behind it. They'll, it's something, they interpret any new laws or new, uh, State Department rules to ensure any policies we adopt are correct and interpret it accurately. And they'll, they send out the new policies that, you know, some of them are required by law. They'll send them to us written correctly. We just got a sample. And that, you know, every time we, if we use, like, just a straight attorney, we'd pay for that real quick. So that's another, I mean, it's, you know, I don't know why we don't put it all in one cost. You know, it's all these little add-ons, but I think this one's a pretty good one, too.
Make a motion to approve renewing our policy maintenance service, uh, subscription with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve renewing our policy maintenance service subscription with Oklahoma State School, School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic H, consideration of renewing our ASSEMBL annual subscription with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, this is our ORUS, which is Organization for Rural Oklahoma Schools. Uh, this group is good for rural schools. It provides specific for rural schools, and it has a lot of training that's specific.
We're all one of those.
Oh, I'm sorry. ASSEMBL. This is, that subscription service provides an online board meeting platform. It archives all our meeting information. Uh, it's kind of what we, you know, this is what our program is here. And I would recommend we renew this subscription.
Make a motion. We approve the OSSBA ASSEMBL subscription for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve renewing our ASSEMBL annual subscription with Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of renewing our OROS membership for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
This is the organization of rural schools.
Is this too many?
Is this the one that helps with the rural, rural schools?
I thought I heard this somewhere before.
Yeah.
But it is good for rural schools to have good meetings and PD. And they do advocate for the rural, rural schools.
Make a motion. We renew our OROS membership for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
I'm having a hard time hearing you tonight for some reason. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve renewing our OROS membership for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic J, consideration of authorization of the following individuals and their responsibilities for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Can we read all those as listed?
Okay, this list is just, they all have certain responsibilities that need to be board-approved each year.
Is there any?
Is there any new ones?
Yeah, the newer differences or change, big changes, or?
No, I mean, maybe like somebody's an activity fund custodian. Uh, Tammy Bush is now like the encumbrance clerk, or programs clerk, things like that. There's no like any big movement.
Make a motion to approve authorizations for following individuals and their responsibilities for the twenty-four, twenty-five school years listed.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve authorization of the following individuals and their responsibilities for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic K, consideration of approval of changes to district, uh, treasury bank account signers.
Okay, this is, uh, removes Chris Copeland and adds Lindy Hamlin, district treasurer, uh, to be the district treasurer bank account signer.
Make a motion to approve the changes to the district treasurer bank account signers.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the changes to district treasurer bank account signers as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic L, consideration of empowering fiscal year twenty-five superintendent Thomas Kettles to act on behalf of the Super Board of Education in the approval of purchases, encumbrances of funds, assignment of purchase orders up to ten thousand dollars for original purchases, and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five designated as district purchasing officer.
Okay, this allows me, like I said, to be the designated district purchasing officer. None of the amounts have changed or.
Same as was.
Same as was.
And then I assume all this, that you would be approving is already encumbered per se? Is that how?
Well, unless it's under ten thousand, like we wanted to go, we had to go buy something for two thousand, we would just do it.
Okay.
But if it's over ten thousand, it's gonna be board-approved before we do it.
Okay. Do you use that much, I mean, through the year, I mean, do you?
The under ten thousand?
Yeah.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Would be acceptable. I didn't know if you did.
Yeah, like our list of encumbrances, all that, that's below that.
Yeah. Okay, all the stuff below are, okay.
Right, right, or above that. Otherwise, our list would be pretty long.
Yeah, pretty long. I'll make a motion. We approve Tom Kettles, uh, to approve purchase orders up to ten thousand dollars and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by.
Did that right?
Seconded by Jennifer to approve, um, Superintendent Tom Kettles to act on behalf of the State Board of Education in the approval of purchases, encumbrances of funds, assignment of purchase orders up to ten thousand dollars for original purchases, and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five designated as district purchasing officer. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic M, authorization for fiscal year twenty-five superintendent Thomas Kettles to serve as school board's federal programs legal representative for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Federal programs items, but not limited to, are as listed.
Okay, like I said, this gives me the authority to represent state or schools and all these federal programs. So I would recommend we approve it.
That's a lot.
Make a motion to approve action topic E on the.
I'll second. I agree. Uh, motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve, uh, fiscal year Superintendent Thomas Kettles to serve as the school board's federal programs legal representative for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Seems like we're giving that Tom Kettles guy a lot of empowerment.
Kind of getting worried here.
Action topic N, consideration of approval for fiscal year twenty-five Thomas Kettles to serve as authorization authorized representative of the Oklahoma State Board of Education child nutrition programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, this allows me to represent, uh, state or schools for the child nutrition program. I don't know why it has to be separate.
So make a motion. We approve Superintendent Thomas Kettles to serve as authorized representative of the Oklahoma State Department of, Department of Education child nutrition programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to approve Superintendent Thomas Kettles to serve as authorized representative of the Oklahoma State Board of Education child nutrition programs for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic O, consideration of milk bids for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
All right, we've requested bids from three places, but only received one. Now it's from Highland Dairy. That's the same company we're currently with. And their prices went up a little bit. Uh, the biggest one, probably milk, you know, one point five cents. Uh, fat free chocolate milk, up one point eight cents. Uh, orange juice, up four point five cents. And apple juice, up three point seven cents.
Are we happy with them?
Yeah, we kind of have to be. One bid, yeah, they, no, I think they do pretty good.
They provide our milk boxes and everything.
Yeah, and that's one good thing. They provide those cold boxes and everything.
Do they take it back, too? Do they take it back if it's?
Old milk, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if it's frozen or something, and they give us a credit.
Yeah, that's what I thought they, they're pretty good at. Take your. Make a motion to approve Highland Dairy's milk bid for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the milk bids from Highland for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes. Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic P, consideration of fueling price, fuel prices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, once again, one, one place was willing to provide a fuel bid, and that was Hopkins. Same company we're currently with, and it was, I mean, like seven cents above what they paid for, and it's the same as last year.
I make a motion that we approve Hopkins propane for the fuel bill for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to accept the bid from Hopkins for fuel price for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of renewable contract or copier services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, we have a five-year agreement with Advanced Copier Solutions. This is our last fifth year with, with them, but we need to stick with them for this year, and next year, we'll go back out for bids. I would recommend we renew this contract with ACS.
Make a motion that we renew the ACS copier contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to renew the contract with ACS for copier services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic R, consideration of contract to provide student extracurricular activity drug testing services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, we received two bids for the extracurricular drug screening services. The lowest bid was from Precision Drug Screen. It's the same company we currently use, and I would recommend we accept this bid.
Make a motion, we approve Precision Drug Screening for Student Extracurricular Activity Drug Testing Services.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to approve the contract with Precision Drug Services to provide student extracurricular activity drug testing services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic S, consideration of contract to provide alcohol and drug testing services for employees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, we received two bids for the employee drug screening services, and the lowest bid was Alpha Drug Testing. That's who we currently use, and I would recommend we accept this bid.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Alpha Drug Testing for the testing of employees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to approve the contract with Alpha Drug Testing to provide alcohol and drug testing services for employees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic T, consideration of approval of contract with Total Rehab for speech therapy services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
This is the, at least the second, maybe the third month we've talked about this, but last, last month, we approved Macalester Regional for some speech services, but they said if they didn't get the OT and PT as well, they weren't, didn't want to do it. So we're back to Total Rehab for speech services. So I would recommend we accept a bid from Total Rehab for speech services.
Make a motion to approve Total Rehab for speech service, therapy services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to approve the contract with Total Rehab for speech therapy services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer? David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic U, consideration of approval of fundraising activities for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, each year, we approve fundraisers, and you have leads from each school that are very similar to last year, and I would recommend we approve the fundraisers as listed.
I make a motion to approve the fundraiser activities for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to approve fundraising as activities as listed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic V, consideration of approval of high school softball, taking an overnight trip to Six Flags Over Texas on August fifth, twenty twenty-four. Students will be transported by school bus.
Now, this is the high school softball team, like, take a trip to Six Flags in August, and they need to take approval, take the bus out of state for this trip, and I would recommend we approve taking the bus out of state for this trip.
Motion to approve the high school softball trip to Six Flags Over Texas on August fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, to approve the high school softball, taking an overnight trip to Six Flags Over Texas on August the fifth, twenty twenty-four. Students will be transported by school bus. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic W, consideration of bids on constructing a middle school pavilion.
Okay, this is for the pavilion south of the main building. I don't know if you look by, look at it, drive by, you'll see it's, it's lower on one end than the other, but it has extensive termite damage. I think it's probably the first one we ever built, but it's rotting away. We put some, people, and put some pipe in it this past year, but the rafters are rotted, so it's not, I mean, it's just nothing to hold it up. Now, the other side, I don't know if you know, the pot machine, that metal thing, that's holding that side up. We've got, we've got to get it down.
We can jam it, let it all down.
Down. Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's just termites have eaten it up. The corner post on the east side, they're about this far from the concrete, they're rotting away. I mean, it's, it's time. The lowest bid we got was from Mike Bush Construction. That's to replace the pavilion, actually make it a little bit bigger, for total cost of about sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty. That'd be all metal. It'd be there for a long time.
Like, hold, take it all down?
We're, one city guy is gonna tear it down, get that old stuff out of there.
Okay. So they'll just build the whole construction?
Right, just the mid, yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the bid from Mike Bush for the annual construction of the middle school pavilion.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the bid from Mike Bush Construction on constructing a middle school pavilion. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time, we move on to executive session. A proposed, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven V, one of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Matt Jones, middle school principal, effective end of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Number two, discussion of retirement of Jim Parker, basketball assistant coach, effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Number three, discussion of resignation of Dixie Colwell, high school math teacher, effective June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Number four, discussion of continued employment or non-reemployment of support personnel for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number five, discussion of employment of middle school principal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number six, discussion of employment of high school social studies teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And number seven, discussion of employment of Emily Bussie as posse and twenty-first century century, twenty-first century elementary summer school teacher.
Make a motion that we continue the executive session.
Second.
David? Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, at six oh five PM during executive session. Executive session. Jennifer? David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to adjourn the board to open session at six twenty-five PM. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Huggins, Brett Quam, Kenny Whetson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White. Superintendent Tom Kettles was also present. No motions nor votes were taken. Matt Jones?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Matt Jones for the end of twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the resignation of Matt Jones, middle school principal, effective end of twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept the retirement of Jim Parker, basketball assistant coach, effective May thirtieth, twenty-four.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the retirement, resignation of Jim Parker, basketball assistant coach, effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion that we accept the resignation of Dixie Colwell, math teacher, effective June sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to accept the resignation of Dixie Colwell, high school math teacher, effective June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion that we continue employment of the non, and/or non-reemployment. Continue the employment of support personnel for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second.
Done that fourth here. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the continued employment of our support personnel for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we employ Michelle Moore as high school, a middle school principal for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept employment of Michelle Moore for the middle school principal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion that we employ Derek Farrell for the high school social studies teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to employ Derek Farrell, high school social studies teacher for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion that we employ Emily Bussie as posse and twenty-first century elementary summer school teacher.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to employ Emily Bussie as posse and twenty-first century elementary summer school teacher. Jennifer? Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. New business?
No new business.
No new business.
Make a motion to approve. I want to do that one.
Um, wait, second.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to adjourn at six twenty-eight PM. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next regular meeting, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.